Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back in session for City Council Ordinance 23-0381, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Mayor Costello, councilman from the 11th District. Joined at my left by Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District member of the committee, Councilman Z. Cohen, 1st District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District. To my right, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District member of the committee, Councilman John Bullock, 9th District, Councilman Felicia Porter, 10th District, and Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District member of the committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran. We're joined by members of Mayor Brandon Scott's office and Council President Nick Mosby's office. We are here for Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD. Commissioner Kennedy, before you get started, a couple of quick ground rules. For anyone who has a cellphone, please turn it to vibrate, silent, off, or some other setting that does not make noise. If you are testifying, you have these new devices in front of you. There are two buttons on the bottom. One of those looks like a little Lego figure with a Wi-Fi signal coming out of their ear. Please press that button. Your microphone will turn red, both on the dashboard and on the ring at the top. Please turn that on when you are speaking. When you are finished speaking, please turn that off. These things will catch whispers, breathing, sniffles, whatever. So please be sure to do that. Commissioner Kennedy, before you begin, if you would please introduce the members of your senior team that are here, first and last name and position, title. And one last thing, how many slides do you have in your deck? 18, 20? How much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation?
We probably will go through this in about 10 minutes or less.
Perfect. Thank you. Please take it away, Commissioner.
Excellent. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee and other fellow members of the city council. Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner for the Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development. I am joined here with members of our team. We have Chief of Staff, Mr. Scott Davis. We have Deputy Commissioner Kate Edwards of our Development Division, Deputy Commissioner Jason Hessler for permits and litigation, Deputy Commissioner Eric Booker of Code Enforcement and Emergency Management, Deputy Commissioner Nicole Hart for homeownership and housing preservation. We also have Kimberly Rubens, who's our Chief of Policy and Research, Stephanie Murdock, who is our Director of Legislative Services. We have Felicia Knight-Davis, who is our Chief of Human Resources. We have Tammy Holle, who is our Chief of Strategic Communications, Dr. Marvin Bly, who is our newest member as our Chief of Fiscal Operations and our Chief Fiscal Officer, Deputy Commissioner Mary Correa for Consolidated Planning. Also with us is Glenda Curtis, our Chief Equity Officer, Jackie Addison, who is our new community outreach coordinator. We also have with us Erica Yates, our Assistant Commissioner for Code Enforcement and Property Management, as well as our newest Assistant Commissioner Nancy Goldring, who's our Assistant Commissioner under the Code Enforcement, Human Services, and Emergency Operations, as well as Latoya Tisdale, who is our Deputy Chief of HR as well. And I believe that, and Stacy, oh gosh, Stacy, that's a total accident because she's amazing. Stacy Freed is our Executive Advisor to the Commissioner and also who could not be with us today, but a critical member of the team is Valentina Yocuomo, who is also a Senior Advisor to the Commissioner's Office as well. Excellent. So we will just make it through and start working through our overall slides. So in terms of, just a reminder, in terms of our agency mission, also main fiscal goals that we have for 2024 is cohesively working across all of our divisions in partnership with the community, as well as our other city agencies, to continue to revitalize our communities and reduce blight and reduce vacancy in the city of Baltimore while investing and allocating resources to neighborhoods where we have seen historic disinvestment across our city. Our goal number two for fiscal year 2024 is implementing the new permitting system, which also coincides, not just with the permitting system, but it's also an entirely new code enforcement system as well, which will make it faster and easier for members across, not just for staff, but also the public in terms of acquiring permits within the city. We have an overview of the different services that we have within the agency. I'll go into the first one, which is Service 593, which is our community support projects. You know, this actually includes both our Community Catalyst Grant Program, as well as our CDBG funds. It's note that we are including some pending personnel actions on the CDBG side as it relates to additional compliance and monitoring staff for CDBG administration activities. We also have a new activity and service within this, which is our 108 loan debt service. So we've actually announced recently the first use of a Section 108 HUD loan in a number of years within the city of Baltimore to help support the renovation of Chick Web Recreation Center. So this requires a new line for the debt service that's associated with that Section 108. We also have, our next service, our 604, which is our Before and After Care. This one kind of maintains the current level of service. We're limited on this based off of what the state licensing requirements are. You know, this is a service that we've had conversations with, you know, in the past on is DHCD the right fit for this service? We are actively looking at that with BBMR, with the administration, and what that will mean for the future. In terms of administration, we have three positions that are actually going to be moving to BSIT out of these in terms of end some budget that was needed for the Dawson Center repairs for building maintenance, the 1401 East Preston Street location, which covers under administration as well. Our weatherization services, this service is actually majority funded through our grant funding from the state, which often flows through both state funding, as well as federal funding to support the weatherization activities. And we continue to work through the administration of these funds while leveraging our other home repair funds as well. So weatherization services is a key component that helps support not just lowering energy bills for our residents, but also healthy homes, activities, and leverages with both lead hazard reduction, our home repair, as well as our housing upgrades to benefit seniors' work. Our Service 742, in terms of promoting homeownership, the, this has, a significant component to this is actually the funding for Right to Counsel, which would fall under the Service 742, which comes in for Right to Counsel funding. This also has $500,000 from the Casino Local Impact Funding for the Community Development Fund, which is also included within this service, which will be used to support legacy homeowners, reduce blight, and look at safety and aging in place as well. Our next service that would come up is our Housing Code Enforcement. So some, this includes $2 million in general fund support for code enforcement officers. There was actually some of this during COVID, several budget cycles ago. CDBG picked up some of that cost, but because of the additional loan servicing for the Section 108 and other items, we needed to move this back with general funds. We worked with BBMR on that action. We also have additional funds for our camera replacements within the Special Investigations Unit, and also additional software licenses that are needed for our CLEO and Code Enforcement Legal Division. We also have our registering and licensing of properties and contractors, which is Service 747, including the $80,000 that is an ongoing expense for our Open Gov Registration Software Component, and also additional workflows that are needed within that. We also have been able to reduce some printing and posters costs within that service as well through some efficiencies. Our next service that we have are 748, our Affordable Housing. This has actually our new compliance officer that's under our federal home loan, so this service is majority funded through our federal allocations for support, and then it also has funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Our next service is our Property Acquisition Disposition Asset Management, Service 749. We have additional positions here as part of our enhancement requests, Assistant Counsel, Data Analyst, Operations Manager, that will continue to support the city's work on the reduction of vacant housing, and as well as the, to leverage and complement the additional Assistant Counsel positions that were approved in the fiscal year 23 budget. Our Service 750, Housing Rehabilitation Services, this covers both our lead hazard reduction, as well as our Office of Rehabilitation Services. This is majority funded through our federal CDBG funds, as well as our HUD lead hazard reduction grant funding as well. Our Service 751, Building Zone and Zoning Inspections and Permits, this maintains the current level of service, and we actually also will have some additional positions that will be able to be fulfilled within that service through conversations with BBMR in terms of a historically vacant position that has been used as part of turnover savings for that position. 752 is our Community Outreach and Services service, and we have the maintains, the maintains the current level of service for that, and we round out with our Service 754, which is our summer food service program, which is 100% funded through our federal and state money through USDA and Maryland State Department of Education to provide summer meals to our residents. That finishes the slide presentation for today. I did want to have a statement as part of this, that since becoming Acting Commissioner, and I've been about the business of strengthening and in many ways retooling agency operations. When the pandemic hit, DHCD was just getting its stride with the launch of the Community Development Framework. The framework is our focused investment strategy to direct resources into long disinvested areas and reduce vacant properties. Not only were we able to stabilize and advance that strategy, but we also continued the advancement of many complementary actions, and were able to accelerate activity on many fronts. Some of these include the partnership and continued partnership with the Neighborhood Impact Investment Fund, our Community Catalyst Grant Programs, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and our partnership with the Housing Authority of Baltimore City to advance the Perkins Somerset Old Town Project. Additionally, under the continued banner of progress, the city, DHCD, we've employed new tools, new approaches, and new levels of outreach. Vacant properties, we know, disproportionately impact residents in majority black communities in Baltimore. They compromise the resident's quality of life, they create significant public health challenges, they negatively impact property values, and they significantly also weaken the city's tax base. This administration has remained diligent in tackling this issue, and at this time, we have the lowest number of vacancies in decades at 14,141 vacant properties with vacant building notices. Since January 1st of 2022, we've reduced the number of vacant properties by 929. We continue to work with community, with our fellow agencies, a broad group of stakeholders, and members of the council to expeditiously reduce the number of vacant properties. This includes exploring different financing options and other ways that we can tackle reduction of vacant properties and putting vacant properties back into productive use while impacting and lifting up all members of our community. Another area that I'd like to touch on briefly is that of permits. The city of Baltimore processes over 40,000 permits annually. With a hub-and-spoke model we presently use, whereby DHCD serves as the central hub and routinely makes referrals to seven other agencies within the spoke, we're mindful what our customers go through to get to the point of submitting a completed application. We know the current system has functionality issues, and customers often need help navigating and finding information. Some users encounter delayed or lack of response to inquiries from agency stakeholders, including timely processing, approval of plan, and scheduling of inspections. The bottom line is, our present system is often confusing and time-consuming, and an inefficient permitting process, and an inefficient permitting process can cost the city invaluable time, resources, and revenue. Our plans for reform are well underway. Our goal in transitioning to a new system is to provide a system that will deliver an equitable, user-friendly workflow with ease of accessibility. We have held focus groups and surveyed the public to gain customer input to inform the direction, and once we secure a vendor, which we're very close on, working with BSIT, test and train on a new software, we'll be relieved that we'll be able to launch that system for customers by spring of next year. In order to accomplish the agency's daily tasks and goals, we need to have a dedicated productive staff that has the tools and support necessary to do the job. We have worked with BBMR and will be filling vacant positions that were historically held for turnover savings. We are also actively reviewing key personnel needs, such as increasing base pay for certain classifications for attraction and retention of talent, and the needed reclassification of positions to align with the mission and operations, and will be utilizing some vacant positions to accomplish these goals. In order to support our staff, DHCD has prioritized staff training and alignment with a change in culture within the agency. We have set clear goals and are working to ensure that all staff are in the same boat, rowing in the same direction. We also have been working with managers and supervisors to hone their skills and work to manage from a space that motivates through positive reinforcement, a sense of togetherness, and not shame and public ridicule. In sum, overall, we claim significant progress. We do not claim perfection, and we have evolved and will continue to evolve as an agency. It's my honor to be at the helm, working with the dedicated staff of DHCD, with Mayor Scott, CAO Leach, the rest of the administration, as well as in concert with you, the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to skip myself for now. I'm going to go to Bullock and then Ramos, and we've also been joined by Councilman Antonio Glover, 13th District, and Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the committee, and Councilman Isaac Itzey Schleifer, 5th District Member of the committee. Please forgive me if I missed anyone.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Kennedy and your team. I know I've remarked to several of you about the busyness that you've had over the last several months and a year as it relates to demolishing vacant properties, so I do appreciate the work you're doing on that front. One follow-up to that, though, I know, we've spoken on a couple of instances, when some of those vacant properties are coming down, the aftermath, right, whether it's a retaining wall, or whether it's a decorative wall. I mean, can you speak, one, just about the after effects of some of these demolitions? Because we see, one, there could be naked walls that are there, but then also having some of these open lots, and then how communities are dealing with some of that, and even in terms of the air quality, too?
Colleagues, one thing I wanted to mention for this one, just because of the high volume of council members, we're going to do one question apiece and try and move through these as quickly, because I know we're going to be doing a couple rounds. Thank you, Commissioner.
So I just want to make sure that, Councilman, that I, the question is specifically about the demolition, kind of after demolition, in terms of the management of the wall, as well as air quality management during the demolition?
Yeah, I know there's issue, you can speak also about the contractors. I know there were issues in terms of who was doing the demolition, and then the effects afterward, whether it be, you know, wetting and making sure the dust is kept down in those communities, and then the maintenance of the lots, too.
I'm going to actually turn to Deputy Commissioner Hessler to answer that, but we do have work with the, continued to work with the demolition contractors. Also, there is a new demolition contract that's being bid on currently that also changes some of the specs for the creation of the weather wall.
Thank you.
Jason Hessler, Department of Housing. In relation to the dust mitigation, our demo contractors and all demolitions are required to wet during the demolition and during the debris removal. Inspectors are on-site for our demolitions to make sure that hoses are in place, water's available, and that that activity is going. We're also, we perform for private demolitions, pre-demo consultations where we go over all of that, and then we require a first-day inspection so that before they start, we're making sure hoses are laid out, everything is ready to go, to mitigate the dust. We worked at the beginning of Project Core with the state in doing a study of those mitigation measures to see if they worked, and we were very pleasantly surprised that everything that we were putting in place was keeping any kind of dust to the site and really reducing any kind of danger to the community. So those are in place, that's working. I think the new contract, we've stepped it up a little bit and matched up with some of those things that we were able to put in place with Project Core, so that should improve things. In relation to the walls, the new contract does change up how we're doing walls, which I believe will not only structurally create better walls, longer-lasting walls, but also aesthetically be more desirable than the current process and what your, the block walls that we're currently left with, or the lack of walls. And then as far as management of the vacant lots, the majority of what we demo is private property. I think there's a misunderstanding there in the public that the city's just going out and demoing city-owned vacancies, and that's not the case. The majority of what we demolish, whether it's an emergency or planned, at the time of demolition, is private property and remains private property until additional action is taken. So we are identifying those properties for in-rem acquisition, where the city would foreclose on the demo lien or the taxes in relation to that lien or other already existing liens, so that that land can be consolidated and offered up for other uses down the road, whether it be by the community, by a neighboring property owner, or for development. So all that's in place and getting better with, I think, the new contract that is on the street and closes in a couple weeks, at the end of June.
And thank you for that clarification, and I appreciate you also getting a little more detail with that. As far as the, that new contract out there for the walls, I know one of the walls I pointed out to both you and Commissioner Kennedy was at, on Saratoga Street, across from Kirby Lane Park, so I know they'll be very happy to hear about this new contract. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about the vacant properties piece, particularly Service 749. Commissioner, you said in a previous hearing that you anticipate being able to acquire 200 vacant and abandoned properties per month using the in-rem foreclosure process, both the current and expanded, which we'll be doing at some point. I'm wondering, I'll ask about capacity for that for a second, but my question is really on the disposition side. So if we are anticipating acquiring that many per month, and you've talked very diligently about doing a block-by-block solution, what's the disposition plan? How are you staffing up for that? What is the capacity that you have to get to? Because we shouldn't be holding all 200 a month. We really need to get them out the door. So I'm just curious about that disposition plan and also the priority. Obviously, you're doing in-rem in the impact investment areas, for the most part. You've done some outside of the investment areas as well, but, you know, having them scatter all over the place doesn't, you know, work either. So just give us a better sense of, because we didn't have an opportunity in the hearing a few weeks ago, well, months ago, to really get into that kind of detail.
Yeah, that's a good question. So there is a goal, you know, of that 200 a month by the end of calendar year 2024. We're actively working on that component of it. Solicitor Thompson has had conversations with the city, with the clerk of courts, about a dedicated clerk for that work and coordination there, as well as other things that are needed to happen. We've had continued conversations with the finance department on that piece. When we talk about the disposition component, there are a couple of different pieces to that disposition piece that we're working on in terms of building that pipeline. So one of the first things is not just in terms of staff, but we're also evaluating and updating the templates that we already use for the disposition of the LDA templates. We have put out on the street for public comment the standardized pricing model for the vacant properties, which would reduce, A, the cost and the price of the vacant properties, but standardize that price across the board so that there wouldn't be, there's very little room. We don't have to wait for different appraisal costs or changes in assessed value or so forth. This is what the standardized pricing model is. We've been reviewing the public comments, and we will be actually putting that out for a second round of public comment to get more feedback on that standardized pricing model, which will help on the disposition side, both on capacity as well, because streamlining with the template, the standardized pricing, et cetera. The other piece that we're working on, we've done this with a couple of the communities within the impact investment areas. We just spoke with two other communities last week. In the month of June, you will see out on the street a request for qualifications for developers for two of our impact investment areas, because part of this is building the capacity and understanding what the capacity is for the developers on the backend or persons, organizations that are interested in doing the work. What is their financial capacity? What are they capable in? Who wants to be working where, right? So we're working in partnership with the community on creating that RFQ. The community will be part of the review response for those developers to be able to ask questions, and that way, too, the community is lockstep in terms of who is going to be working with the community on that work. We've also talked to them about kind of the community benefits side of this work and what constitute a community benefit, because there's community benefits beyond just monetary benefits. So we're also looking at, as part of that, adding in a kind of responsibility type of agreement, which may be community benefits, but we've talked about responsibility of the developers, working with the community, being respectful of the existing homeowners in the community. If they damage something, stepping up to take care of it, those different pieces. The other section of that, of the disposition process, so I think all of those things tied together when you think about how and what's needed. The other piece is the workflows within our software system. So we're finalizing a couple of the different workflows within SLATE, A, that are helping with the in-rem acquisition part, which will be streamlining and creating efficiencies through technology, and those will actually follow through with the disposition side as well, with the existing software and the changes to workflows that we have there. So all of that, to be said, that it will be working in terms of both acquisition through the disposition in partnership with the community and creating the efficiencies that are there. We're evaluating if we need any additional, that's part of kind of our overall vacancy and staffing construction, you know, staffing work in terms of what's needed on the disposition side, as well as with marketing, compliance, and some other pieces. But we are actively working with BBMR on some of those changes that we'll be able to make and evaluate for some of the new positions that may be needed.
So you're doing this impact investment, in two impact investment areas, working with community on what the scope of work would be for the RFQ, and then you're thinking that that would sort of be your model moving forward in other ways, if this ends up working out?
We've done it already in one of the impact investment areas, and we are looking to expand it and work with the other communities. We're also working and looking at it with communities that are not in impact investment areas, and having those conversations, such as our crime prevention through environmental design areas, some of what we call our community asset-building communities as well. So it's looking not just in the impact investment areas, but in communities across the city.
And so you don't have a plan right now to staff up until you figure out what the, what the impact is going to be on this particular process?
We know that we will need some additional, and we're actually evaluating those, and we'll be making some staffing changes in the next fiscal year, using some changes in terms of reclassification of positions, as well as some ability on some of the vacant positions that have historically been held for turnover. Yep, and so then we're also evaluating what in addition will be needed once we have some of the other components in place.
I just wanted to add into that, we're also looking at ways to utilize our current staff in different ways. So we have our current relocation staff, who are also real estate officers. We've been doing a lot less relocations, so we're looking at utilizing them to take up some of that donation work, which will also free up our other real estate officers to help push our dispositions through faster. So use, finding creative ways to use our existing staff as well.
And so the number here for fiscal '24 target for dispositions really shouldn't be 100. You have in this book 100. I know that there's been way more than 100 that have actually been rehabbed, and I think, you know, that's obviously a lot of the public, or the private market as well, but this number seems low to me.
That number would be low for fiscal year '24 in terms of dispositions, while we're also currently increasing the, while we're increasing the inventory that we have within the city as well. Because right now, we have that around 1,000, and some of those are the hardest ones, and they will not be moved. hardest ones, and they will not be moving until we complete other in-rem cases and so forth to be able to move in broader chunks. The other component that we're looking at is, within the dispositions, putting together those processes with community as part of kind of the RFQ and developer analysis, doing different chunks of property or different geographic areas and kind of working with community on how they'd like to see some of that distribution of the properties, once we get them into, into our inventory. So that number is low. And we know it's going to be increasing, but it is low right now, given the current inventory we are, the additional acquisitions that have to be made in order to be able to even, to dispose of the properties that we have right now in the inventory. Because some of those that we have currently are the hardest ones of the bunch.
And are you going to be able to beat this 120-day disposition? I thought, saw that somewhere in the book. I mean, what is, what is your commitment in terms of timeframe for disposition?
We've actually, as part of this, we've been looking at reducing the 120 days for disposition through a number of different factors. A, some of the software components, the standardized pricing model that we've been putting into place. So we've been talking about looking to get that disposition down, and Deputy Edwards, in that 90-day or less timeframe.
That's including the BOE process?
That's including the BOE process. We've actually evaluated and, and had, what we've also been evaluating with the city solicitor and the law department on different components of how to, and the comptroller's office, on reducing the time for BOE approval as well.
Okay, I look forward to more details. I have a lot more questions, Mr. Chair, but I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Want to just take a moment to thank Laura Larson, our budget director, Mara James, our deputy budget director, and Bob Seneme, deputy director at finance. You may have very quietly noticed the tag-in and tag-out that just occurred, but they've been with us through every hour of these budget hearings. So thank you very much. Councilman Stokes, and then council vice president Middleton. And just as a reminder, colleagues, we're on a one-question rule, so please try and be as efficient as possible with your question. And Commissioner, you and your team, as efficient as possible with the response, please and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this question is for Deputy Commissioner Hessler. We know we have a lot of dumping in our community, and a lot of times, the dumping didn't even come from our community. It come from people outside our community. So my question is, how much money do you have budgeting for these cameras? Because I just heard a dumping on Kennedy and 20th Street. The guy dumped, left his mail, came back the next day, left his trash, left his mail, and you see the mess up there. And it's from, they was from Middle River. And we always jump on our community about dumping, but a lot of our dump, it come from outside of Baltimore City. So my question is, how much money in the budget you have for cameras? Because I hear this a lot, and I'm sure my colleagues hear about the dumping. But if we continue to have the dumping, that's the resources that we keep spending and spending and spending. So is there any money in the budget to put some of these cameras out at these places where they continue and dump and dump? And if you add all the money up in the resources, we just spending money and chasing trash, chasing dumping. So again, how mu, how much money you have in the budget in terms of addressing the illegal dumping?
Thank you, Councilman. We are currently in the process of acquiring 29 or 30 cameras with existing funding. And then in this budget, there's either $40,000 or $45,000 that was added in for cameras specifically for illegal dumping.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton.
Good afternoon. Just first, again, thank you for your large team and your responsiveness to my office, continued residential area and very responsive. So I, my first question, you know, we, I know you're still trying to get a hold of and tackle these privately-owned homes and going through the process. And now we seem to have, it's been a longstanding problem with the garages. And it's, I know there's been a consensus, and there's other areas of the city that have the same problem. My area, Doe Field, and I think on Woodhaven, Windsor Hill area, there's been death in these garages. There's people, the people in the community have to put up grates to stop snakes and other rodents, and they can't have fun in their backyards. And it's just, I think through COVID, things have gotten worse. Is there some, you know, it's a safety and health risk. Is there something that you're doing now in the immediate? I really think it's an emergency case, and I think it's been a consensus to demo all of these things. I mean, they're deplorable. They can't be fixed. Please, just give, kind of give me an update. I'm sure you've had conversation of how to deal with it, and I think it's an important issue now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yeah, garages are a bit more unique than vacant houses are, in the sense that in some cases, they may not be vacant. If the roof has been removed and it's just walls, it still becomes a place where dumping or other activities could occur, but it may not be a violation. So it becomes a challenge. Also, in a lot of neighborhoods, I think we saw this last week, in your area, where it's a stretch of garages with ownership that is varying from people that live on that block or nearby that own the garages, to some of the garages still being owned by a deed owner from three, three transactions prior on a neighboring property. And so tracking down the deceased owners, whether or not they have an estate, getting a violation notice on the property that allows us to then act on it. Those are all things that, that we actively do, particularly when the community is able to highlight garages that are of issue. We do go in where appropriate and demolish some garages, because at least taking down those walls opens up that space and makes it less appealing to criminal behavior and other activities. It opens it up and allows people to see what's going on in there. So we're, we're doing that on a case-by-case basis.
I just think it's become a really bad issue. I mean, it really needs attention. This has been going on for at least 20 years, and it just, there's, there is a consensus that they need to be torn down. There needs to be some negotiation. There needs to be these bad people that own these properties, that, you know, you need to do receivership. It's just time for something to happen, so we don't have any terrible health problems. You know, they, I have a community that stopped a child from playing in one of these garages. Children seek out, and these are places that, you know, attract children just as an interesting play area, but it's very dangerous. I think it should be something that should be placed at the top of a list, and there needs to be some door-to-door, you know, the, I think the communities are waiting for leadership from the city. And it just, we can't just, you know, cut the grass. Some of these places are so terrible, you can't even board them anymore. So I think immediate action, because we, again, as the council members that are the closest to the constituents, we're the ones that really get blamed for this action not happening fast enough. So please consider that as, as a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter, then Burnett.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I did have a question about the use of drone technology for kind of assessment for DCHD. I mentioned at a previous hearing, I believe it was a few days ago, the hearings are running together, but I mentioned the use of drone technology in multiple agencies. And I'm hoping that housing can utilize the, this new technology that is being used in other cities. But can you speak to any plans that you have to kind of integrate that technology within our current model? More specifically, I'm looking for kind of assessment of the vacant housings versus demolition, all those types of things that could be used at housing. Thank you.
So say one thing that the, our roof study and AI roof study helps tremendously in terms of evaluation of condition of roof, roofs. We also have tested drone in terms of looking at demolition components, and we have one staff member that has the qualified qualifications to be able to do that. Actually, just last week, Deputy Commissioner Booker, I had tasked him with evaluating kind of the other components that needed to increase our use of drones, whether or not it be for building inspection, code enforcement inspections, demolition inspections, et cetera. And I just got that briefing material from Deputy Commissioner on Thursday or Friday of last week. So we'll be continuing to evaluate that, to see what is needed to increase the number of staff that are trained and that have the qualifications to, to fly the drones, to be able to do those inspections, and then also additional, what would be needed in terms of cost for purchasing of those. And I know Deputy Hessler wanted to mention about the roof.
Just want to clarify, so the, the roof study that I'm, we've talked about a little bit, is not drone technology. That's using aerial photographs that are taken annually by a company for the city. So it's not drones flying out to take those. Sometimes we get complaints about that, and people misunderstand that piece. But that, that study itself did, you know, highlight 1,000 properties for us to look at, to review for potential emergency situations. We've had staff looking at those properties. We've taken 20 properties down that were on the list and determined to be emergencies based on that, the roof study, and an additional 20 properties that were either connected to those buildings and had to also come down, or in looking at property A, we saw across the street or at the end of the block, property B, that was in bad shape and needed to come down. So I think we are on the last 80 or 90 properties to review out of the 1,000 that were highlighted through the roof study, and we've taken down 40 buildings thus far. And then as far as the drone goes, we do have a quote to get, get the drone, and we've looked at the ability to train additional people. The cost is pretty minimal, $300 to $700 for the, the training. So, but we do have, our demo director is experienced and legally able to fly a drone for our purposes.
Thank you, and I appreciate that response. Having set up a company, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to also add to that piece on the drone, that there is something that we're going to need from the city.
Yes.
Because when we fly drones, we have to have a declaration letter from the FAA to authorize us to fly drones in this airspace.
Yeah.
So there's some support that we're going to need from you all, just to make certain that we can get the certificate authorization to actually do it on a broad scale.
Yeah, and that was actually what I was gonna kind of allude to. In my previous life, I helped set up a drone aerial technology company, and so I'm well familiar with the FAA regulations, drone technology, and things of that nature. And so the reason why I'm suggesting it is because it's something that could be used not only within housing, but also with BPD. And so we need to start, you know, really addressing some of those issues that we can kind of enter agency use of these technologies, that can be cost sharing associated with it, and also it can really kind of address some of the issues that we're not only seeing with, some of the issues with housing, but also we're seeing other municipalities using drone technology with tracking dirt bikes, you know? So it has a public safety aspect as well. So do we have a timeline on, oh, yes, sir.
But just, so that's to your point. That's why we need the blanket area certificate of authorization, so that other agencies can, can fly up under that authorization.
You got it. And do we have a timeline on when that, when we'll be able to have a decision?
Don't have a current timeline, I said. Just reviewing the additional information from Deputy Booker, as well as Deputy Hessler. So we should have probably some more updates in the next 30 to 60 days, but we don't have a timeline on them.
Okay. Is it possible that we can get a briefing, the Public Safety and Government Operations get a briefing, once you all have that? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And Commissioner, can you make sure you provide an update to the committee within 60 days? Nate, you got that? Excellent, thank you. Councilman Burnett? And we've also been joined by Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this question is about disposition of city property, particularly some of the larger spaces that usually go through, you know, an RFP process. The, I guess, how are, how's the agency looking at like the prioritization of these? Like which ones go first, which ones sit a while longer? And, you know, because I'm just sort of speaking about, you know, within my district, as you know, we've had a bunch recently. But then there's others that like have been, I think, sitting for way too long. And I'm happy to, you know, I don't want to get into the weeds on one particular lot, but some of them, the one in particular that I'm thinking about, like, we've spent a lot of money maintaining this space, whether it's removing illegal dumping, cutting back greenery, you know, and it's a situation where the agency, in this instance, hasn't effectively budgeted year to year to like keep up with the necessary maintenance. But the lot still hasn't been put out for, you know, the auction process or the RFP process to figure out what else to do with it. So I guess, how do we prioritize, like what rises to the top? And for the ones that aren't a priority, increasing maintenance cost or proactively maintaining these spaces better? Because, you know, what ends up happening is, the community's looking like, look, this is a city-owned space, and it's not being maintained, but I'm getting cited for, by the same agency for high grass and weeds, when like the city property right behind me has high grass and weeds. So just trying to think through, I guess, that's sort of a two-part question, prioritization and maintenance of DHTV lots.
So I think, I'll turn over to Deputy Commissioner Edwards as well. But as it relates to the disposition, so we've actually been reviewing the entire disposition process for kind of the larger RFP sites, and starting to do that differently in terms of, a lot of times, historically, sites were kind of put out for RFP, and it was like, oh, that is louder. I'm gonna like just smack this around. You know, it was put out with a, let's see what we get type of component, then do the presentations to the community, and then kind of work through things. So we've actually been working to reverse part of that process, right, and have the conversations with the community first, and to bring that at the forefront, to really determine what is the site, what is the size of the site, what are the intended uses, or what is the preferred uses, what is the zoning capability for that site, and then also getting an understanding of what we think is an estimate for the total development cost. Because sometimes, we have also seen that people respond to the RFPs without a full understanding of really what the cost may be for that project. So an award might be made, and then it's about trying to put all of the pieces together, and the community is now sitting around waiting while the capital stack is being created for a component. So we're actively looking at kind of switching that, so that we can be prioritizing with community on those larger sites. What is needed there? What is zoned for there? And how do we ensure that the financial components to that are there? Once the RFP is put out, respondents come back to meet the needs, that then other components can move forward.
Yeah, I would also say that we have been working with the mayor's office, with planning, with DPW, well, not DPW, DGSE, sorry. So we have a disposition committee that reviews lots. So we've been working, over the last couple of years, prioritizing some of the surplus schools, because there's been concerns about those getting out on the street fast enough. So the process really is putting together a total list, and then kind of calling from the list the ones that are ready to go. There has been special situations with some of the lots. So I know that one of the lots in your district in particular had been caught up in previous agreements that we're working through and working on to get that one out sooner. But it has been a process where we're working with, among the different agencies, to identify which properties are ready to go out, as well as with the council people and with the as well as with the council people and with the communities to figure out which ones are ready at what time.
And in terms of maintenance, we will continue to work with DPW on the maintenance in terms of mowing, putting in those necessary SRs and so forth to get those components done when we talk about property maintenance.
Just as a quick follow-up, I guess, is there, for consideration, you know, the lot that I'm thinking about, I mean, it's been sort of tied up in this weird agreement for well over a decade. And I, I would just think like the amount of money we've spent cleaning, mowing, like cities lost a lot of money here in just like maintaining a space that we're not actively trying to dispose of. At some point, there should be some sort of threshold, like, look, we've spent X amount of dollars on this space. This has to be a priority of some sort because we keep kicking out money year after year on mowing, trimming, illegal dumping, removal without, you know, the city's eating that cost. And there's a way to just, I think, be a better fiduciary of the tax dollars that we have for, for maintenance. If, you know, if there's a certain time period that's eclipsed that we should, right? This, this needs to, we need to get this one off our hands here because we're kicking out too much cash.
Yep, understood, and we'll take that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer, and then Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Director. First of all, thank you for, for your leadership. I've certainly seen things significantly improve over the years since you started on a lot of the processes. I know you have a lot of different things to worry about on a day-to-day basis, but I do appreciate that you're making a lot of the changes that you said you would make. One thing that is extremely painful to me that I deal with all day, every day, and therefore, since it's painful to me, I make it painful to Jason, is, is the permitting process. And so you have a very large agency with a lot of different priorities. But this is something that I really think, and I've said over the years, could be automated and could be significantly approved. It seems to me like it's, it's as bad as it's ever been, just in the fact of how difficult it is to get through the process. And once you get through the process, that whole issue with the payment links, I get emails every single day on this. And I just want to know what could be done to improve that and also maybe to move some pins or something around in the agency, some vacancies, and put them under Jason and get people to be able to help move this process along. Because I'm, I'm seeing firsthand projects not happening, investment not happening because people just get frustrated and give up.
No, I understand, and we share that frustration with you, which is why we started over about, over two years, no, two years ago now, evaluating where we were and what needed to, to change. Part of that evaluation that's occurred over the two, last two years was not just around permitting, but a realization that if and when we were able to upgrade the permitting software and the technology components, that we actually had to do it in concert with our code enforcement software. We couldn't do one without doing the other. So that was one of those components. So we've been evaluating and working with BSIT on those workflow analyses. We actively are negotiating, and BSIT is taking the lead on negotiating the scope of work and so forth and budget to be finalized with a vendor. And we anticipate actually moving that to, forward to the Board of Estimates, you know, in the kind of July, August timeframe. With that being said, the goals that we have are having a system that is functional, not just for the general public, but also functional and efficient for staff. And there are some pieces in terms of knowing how many staff we'll need and what changes will happen once we have the new system up and running. We have advertised and actively recruiting for the permit liaison position that we have, which will be helping in the meantime, while we're kind of working through the upgraded system to kind of be helping to move some of these permits along, especially with some of our smaller, you know, residents and so forth. And we've also been engaging and encouraging engagement with our stakeholder community on the changes and upgrades and what, you know, pieces need to kind of change to make it easier within, within the system. So.
So, so code enforcement and permitting, you're saying is, is going to be in the same system?
It is a, the same software company that creates the same, so it'll be integrated within the same software company, yes.
And will DPW and all of their functions and their review process within the permitting process also be included in that?
I'll let Deputy Hessler talk a little bit more about that. But we will use in the same system, the same project and plans review, which is called Project Docs, which is what is the actual component to the plans review. But you can talk a little bit more about the integration with DPW.
Yeah, so within our permit and plan review system currently and in the future, we involve the review of multiple agencies. So DPW, DOT, Department of Planning, Fire Department, Health Department are all involved depending on the type of permit that's being applied for and the, and the work that's going through. So they will all have access to the system, they'll have the training, they'll be making approvals on those construction, building, demolition permits through this system. DPW, I think what you're referencing is that DPW currently uses Project Docs to track their soil erosion and similar permitting process. DHCD also uses Project Docs for the uploading of plans, and that will continue in this system. So the information will be shared among the agencies and communicated through the system. But there is a separate process for DPW when you're applying for those soil erosion site plans and that kind of stuff.
So for the end user, will they see everything on one page? When they log in, they'll see where they stand with every single agency and all steps? Or is there still going to be?
They will for all of the construction permits. But the soil erosion, the parts that DPW reviews and usually reviews, these are much larger projects generally, and they review those usually before anybody even applies into our system. That would still be separate.
Why can't that be included?
We might be able to get there down the road. But right now, the focus is on upgrading our existing system to get something that works better for all of our customers and our staff is more intuitive, more efficient, reduces call volume, reduces questions among, you know, contractors, architects, the general public, just to make everything flow smoother.
Right, and so since every, you're saying code enforcement as well as permitting is going to be in the same system, you know, I brought the same code enforcement issue to your attention probably up to two dozen times already since July, where I had a constituent who put out their recycling in their yard because they physically didn't have room in their house anymore, and it exceeded the amount of recycling that could fit in the can because it's getting picked up every two weeks instead of one. And they got a citation for that, $50 citation, which they had no choice but to pay, so they paid it. And then the city administrator at the time, the previous city administrator, agreed that we should not be fining people when, for this overflowing overcycling on their property when it's contained like that because we're not physically picking it up every week like we're legally obligated to do. And so I'd asked, like, if, if that person had been refunded, do we know if that person has been refunded yet?
I would have to get back to you on that. That's actually through our fiscal agency and working in partnership with ECB. So I'll get that answer to you.
Okay, and so in this program, this new software, once it's in place, is that something that, that this team here would be able to physically go in and do? Or is there going to still be an external piece to it?
It would still be an external piece because payment would still go through the overall city payment process and, and any kind of refunds, whether it's for a citation or cleaning or permitting. It's, there's a different check and balances just.
So if somebody applies for the wrong permit by accident, as we've seen, then you can't just transfer that over to the next thing? They have to get a refund and pay for the new one as well?
Right, we can't reach into the drawer and pull out the cash and hand it back to them.
Well, it's electronic, it's through the system. You can't transfer it to a new permit that they're not, they're no longer pursuing that one.
Yeah, it has, it has to go through the process of proper checks and balances to make sure that there's no funny business going on.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, and then Cohen.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Just a quick follow-up on this about this new system. Does this mean that all of the like superintendents and assistant superintendents are going to be operating from the same kind of case management system? Like, I, I know, I mean, I've, I'll just, from my own experience, there isn't a system for consistent, regular follow-up on cases, right? A VBN goes up on a bill, not a VBN, but like a notice goes to a building for some property conditions, and a year and a half later, there has never been a failure to abate citation issued for that property, and the problem still exists. I know that there's no systematized, reliable system for making sure we follow up and press and press and press until we get an actual resolution. Is that something that's going to exist within this new system?
Yes, there'll be automatic date components in terms of triggers and alerts.
And will that be like across the board? Like, I mean, if I get a citation for high grass and weeds and two weeks later, you know, I haven't fixed it, will somebody be coming back to me to check to whether I did the maintenance for that? Or will, you know, if that's citations, right? Or will it be limited to just notices of more perhaps egregious situations?
No, so it would alert in terms of, in terms of those dates and triggers for the alerts for the re-inspections that would need to occur in terms of ensuring that the, a failure to abate a citation was taken care of.
Okay. So I appreciate the, being able to ask this follow-up because it kind of leads to my main thing here is like, even if we have a system for following up, do we have the bodies or what do we got to do to get the bodies? And one thing that is very concerning to me is David McGinnis's unit having three people in it for the whole city for special investigations? Or how many people is it?
There's 12 people in special investigations.
Oh, so is that like quadrants then? Maybe there's, there's three for the northeast whole quarter of the city, something like that?
No, they have an extensive list of tasks that they perform. So there's so many that go out each day to check, on cameras, like known hotspots where we have cameras up. There's, depending on the number of service requests that come in, there's staff that go out each day to do the service request. Then we're also doing what we refer to as skip traces, which is searching for property owners to find good addresses, phone numbers, contact information.
And, and serving process, driving into other counties, spending like all day trying to serve process on people?
Yes.
That's crazy.
Crazy but necessary. And we previously used private service process, and it was much, much less efficient. So actually getting good service on somebody then makes the entire receivership case or other code enforcement case go a lot smoother and faster.
I just get the sense that they're so bogged down, like it's impossible to follow up on cases at the level that would be necessary to move the needle on, you know, more than one thing at a time, feels like. And I got, I got a case, I've talked to David about like a half a dozen times at least, and it's like, a notice was issued in January, and there's, nothing else has happened as a result of that. And it's like one of 100 that I could be following up on. But it seems completely futile to follow up on things half the time. And it just, it seems to me it has to do with lack of available human resource.
So one of the things that we have done is we've worked with BBMR looking into actually already the finishing out this fiscal year and into next fiscal year. So a number of positions that have historically had to be held open for turnover savings and vacancy savings, we've actually worked out with BBMR to be able to recruit and help fill those, a number of which fall in the code enforcement sector. We're also looking at those vacancy savings and turnover savings that's needed in terms of some of the classifications where for attention, for retention and attraction of talent and, and staff for those positions, such as within ICU or ICU, SIU as well as code enforcement, needing to be able to increase the number of staff members that we have available, but also looking at increasing the salaries associated with it across the board so we can attract and retain those staff members because those jobs are definitely not easy jobs to do out on the street. So we are actively doing that. We've been able to start the recruitment process for those code enforcement officers, and then we'll be looking at what needs to happen for additional personnel changes for either reclassification and also increasing base pay.
We do, I mentioned that we have 12 positions there. We do have two people that were offered positions. So we're, we're bumping up to 14, assuming, knock on wood, that they accept the offers and come on board.
With a goal of having how many? What, what do we need? I mean, is there, do we have a metric for what is the right number of people for some industry standard or something like this?
I would say that we can evaluate that. We can put that in a question to get back to you on, on that answer.
Councilman, is that a request?
Yeah, I guess I just.
Could you give us what the request is? Nina here?
How soon do you think that you could have a sense of this for me?
I think we could.
Yeah, asking Councilman Dorsey what was his request.
Yep, just, how soon do you think that you can have for me?
I think we can work to get an analysis of that within the next 24 to 48 hours.
Okay, in the next 24, 48 hours, how many people we really need to perform well, efficiently, effectively, responsibly? The roles of code enforcement in general, and like specifically also SIU? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Sort of similar line of questioning. I am deeply concerned about slum landlords running amok within our communities here in Baltimore, many of whom do not live in our city, but contribute to the degradation of our neighborhoods and our communities. Introduced legislation not long ago, the Strengthening Renter Safety Act, which would require an intensive focus on a small group of persistently bad actors. What I've been told by DHCD repeatedly is that we do not have enough housing inspectors to either do the current work or if we increased scrutiny on this small, persistently bad group, wouldn't have the capacity then. So I'm confused as I look in this budget, why we aren't increasing the amount of money to go to housing inspectors? It is my understanding, and tell me if I'm wrong, but housing inspectors in neighboring jurisdictions get paid significantly more than ours do. And I would assume have probably an easier workload than folks in Baltimore. So my question is, if it is true that we are paying less in Baltimore than surrounding jurisdictions for housing inspectors, why aren't we somewhat dramatically increasing our budget allocation for this line item so that we could be at minimum competitive with surrounding jurisdictions so that we could hold slum landlords accountable and recoup monies back into our city coffers?
Now, that's an excellent question. And that goes to the work that we've done with BBMR to actually do that. And so there are those, the positions that are, add up to be roughly around $2 million worth of positions that, A, is going to allow us to add the number of positions to the code enforcement staff, as well as evaluating how to use that funding to increase the base salary so we can retain and attract that talent that's needed. Because you're right, it is not an easy job compared to some of other surrounding jurisdictions. So I'm pleased to say that we've been able to work through that with Director Larson and the BBR team to be able to be making those changes and doing that evaluation starting now. We've actually started that process, and we'll continue that process in the beginning of 2024, fiscal year 2024, to attract and hire and address those. to attract and hire and address those pay inequities that we need.
So is that, is that $2 million in this year's budget?
Yes, it already is in this year's budget and is reflected in the fiscal year 24 budget. And I would turn it over to Director Larson to speak about how that shows up.
Yeah, great, great series of questions, Councilman. So, you know, throughout the city's budget, where we have high levels of turnover, we've traditionally budgeted some level of savings to realize savings from the natural ebb and flow of people coming in and out of the spots. In the Housing Department budget, over a period of time, the turnover savings had kind of crept up. And so in order to ensure that the department was hitting that number, Commissioner Kennedy and her team had identified a batch of about 20 positions or more that they were holding vacant for the entire fiscal year in order to realize those savings. So what we will be working on, that the Commissioner keeps referencing as we go into fiscal 24, is sort of taking a different approach to how we think about positions in the Housing Department budget. So again, all these positions are authorized, there's just that assumption of savings. So instead of holding 20, you know, 20 or more positions vacant, what the Housing Department's going to do is put all of those positions into recruitment. And there's still going to be some level of, of, you know, an up and down in, in the staffing level throughout the year just because of the number of, of positions. But getting everything into recruitment and having housing have the opportunity to fill all those positions will really allow us to better assess like what is like a realistic level of savings that we could realize. But it's also going to give us an opportunity within the allocation that, within the position allocation that we already have to really figure out what do we need to do in order to get people into these spots? So is it a situation where we have the right number of positions? Or is it a situation where maybe we need a different number of positions, but we need to look at how we're compensating people differently? And so that's really the work that we will be going about collectively as we go into fiscal 24, really with the goal of trying to get housing to a higher number, to a higher fill rate than where they're at right now.
I mean, it seems like both, that we both need more positions and we need to compensate folks better if it is true. And again, this is, I think what you all have said to us in this council, that folks in other jurisdictions make more than we do our inspectors here in Baltimore. Then I appreciate the, moving the positions and looking to 24. But it, it does seem like this is a pretty immediate need and that it is going to require a salary adjustment, both for current folks so that we don't continue to hemorrhage and lose more people and for those that we hope to recruit and retain.
For sure. And the, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind, when we heard from Director Herbert late last week from HR, he also talked about the work of the salary study where they're looking at all the positions. I imagine that this might be an area where we would see some recommendations from the comprehensive salary study. But I think that, you know, in, in our conversations, housing is starting this work now. So they are starting the work to get all these positions into recruitment now so that we can start to see more people come into these slots. And then collectively, we're looking at, you know, the, the housing team is working on what, you know, what, what needs to happen for more targeted ways that we can look at how we can compensate people higher. So I guess what I would, what I would say to the question is that a lot of that work is in motion currently and we should hopefully start to see movement over the next couple of months as we start to be able to staff up a little bit more.
Can we get an analysis of that within the next 60 days on sort of the disparity? The 20 positions, the $2 million, just to kind of lay it out as you are going through this process of what needs to happen internally within the agency as it relates to compensation and other inducements to both attract and keep folks? Like, I just want to understand where we're going with this so that it's not just kind of open-ended.
For sure. I, I think, yeah, we, our teams will work together to provide that follow-up.
Yeah, and I, I would second what Director Larson said, this work is already started because we've been working through this with BBMR. And that was the key piece, was not only looking at what we needed to do to be able to increase, to attract and retain, but also the evaluation of the positions. So we're actively doing the work and I think within 60 days, we can absolutely have that for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your work, Commissioner. You're awesome. I, I want to ask a very direct question. In the budget, you noted that we're reaching a $400,000 funding commitment for the city's Right to Counsel program and adding two new positions to support outreach efforts. I'm curious, what, what is the department's understanding of the need for that program and how do we get there?
So we can continue to look at working with our partners in terms of right, right to counsel. We have a working group that we've put together that evaluates that work and where the funding is. So we have additional funding that's even greater than the $200,000 right now that we're moving out the door through ARPA as well as the CDBG funding that's supporting Right to Counsel, which is in the, so ARPA is in the, the $1 million range and then there's additional funding available to Right to Counsel in addition to the $200,000 for the fiscal year 24 budget, as well as $400,000 from the fiscal year 23 budget. So we will continue to work with the partners to move, move that money. I don't know if Chief Rubens had any other statement around the Right to Counsel component, but I think that, you know, we're working to understand on a yearly need in terms of what needs to move and the capacity of the organizations we're working with to do that work and then how to move that.
Got it, thank you.
Hi, Councilman. The one thing I would like to add is that the funding that we're providing to the Right to Counsel partners that we're working with in our working group seems adequate for their staffing capacity right now. So as they staff up, which is a challenger not just with Baltimore City, but across our nonprofit partners, it's, it's adequate for their needs.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Uh, thank you. Quick follow-up on just this point and then I've got my other question. I had understood from Director Larson that there's $2 million in CDBG for Right to Counsel. Maybe it wasn't from Director Larson, maybe it was from another source. But we had heard earlier on in these budget hearings that there's the $400,000, but then there was also another $2 million in CDBG for Right to Counsel. Is that not correct?
We have the $400,000 from fiscal year 23 that still needs to move.
Right.
We have $200,000 that's in this current budget. We have $1 million that is in ARPA. And then there was a balance of CDBG funding as well, but that CDBG funding is not currently.
At one point, there was $2 million allocated through CDBG CV1 funds. About 900,000 of that was returned by our Right to Counsel partners because of spend-down concerns, based on ability to staff up.
Because of capacity and ability to staff up, so.
On their end.
And so we are not, are we working with them to be able to get the staffing that they need to be able to utilize that money?
So the CDBG CV money actually had a spending deadline, so that money no longer is available for that, for this use.
So the 900,000, we would have to figure out a way to bring back once they're staffed up, is what you're saying. And who, who are our partners in Right to Counsel?
That $900,000 was reallocated to eviction prevention. Our Right to Counsel partners are Public Justice Center. The Maryland Disability, if you give me a moment, I can pull up a document.
Sure, we can make that a request just to get the, the name, the list of the partners. That's totally fine.
The way the money is being allocated right now is we are using MLSC as a pass-through for all of our grants. And so then they are sub-granting out to our Right to Counsel.
I'm sorry, who was, I'm sorry?
MLSC.
Oh, sure, uh-huh. They already have the, the infrastructure to do that, so that makes.
Exactly, they're already doing the state Right to Counsel program.
Yeah, uh-huh, okay. Thanks for that clarity, I appreciate that. The, my question goes back to where I was before, on the disposition side. I'm, I'm really concerned that we, despite continuing to, to talk about doing a block-by-block solution, we had a very unfortunate situation on the 3400 block of Old York Road where there were three houses that are vacant. They're causing a lot of havoc in the community, the houses, the people in the houses are causing a lot of havoc in the community. One has been sold through receivership and is being rehabbed, which we're grateful for. The other one was disposed of to an entity that has had a track record of not doing the right thing. And so I'm kind of wondering, in the, the new thinking around disposition, how do we avoid that? I mean, we know that in a block-by-block strategy that we, not every house, every house has a different story, right? Some of them are going to have to be receivership, some of them are having to be acquisition and some of them are going to be in REM. And that's fine, and the timing we have to work out on each one. But the fact that we didn't actually look for like a developer to do all three and to work with that person makes no sense to me. And so we have a situation now on Old York Road where we have a horrible, horrible nuisance house. There's been three shootings there, there's been a stabbing, there's a lot of drug activity. We have one house being rehabbed, but I don't know how this guy is going to be able to sell this house with this other one next to it. And it's already six months into the LDA, well, not quite, six months into the LDA. So just talk a little bit about how that isn't going to happen again in the new way of doing the disposition. And can you also talk about how you're going to, I don't see in the budget here about increasing maintenance costs? Because as we acquire, we're going to need to keep these buildings maintained and how that is going to, to end up working. And then Commissioner, you also raised the question around new financing. So that's all in the disposition pieces of the question.
Yeah, I would say specific to the one on Old York Road, that property owner that we sold to has only two other properties in the city of Baltimore that actually have, one is actively rented and, and taken care of and the other one was renovated and, and sold. So it wasn't something in terms of capacity and review where it was a quote-unquote "bad actor" in the community that wouldn't have.
Yeah, oh, okay, so that we didn't, we didn't get that information from, from DHCD, but go ahead.
Yeah, so, and it just so happens that unfortunately, at this time, that person going through the process now has a health issue. So we're working with them as they're working through their health issue to follow up on the necessary timelines per the LDA to get that property back in to productive use. While that is happening, we are working with our code enforcement team, with BPD, with the other law enforcement partners to, and DPW in terms of looking at maintaining, boarding on the property, vacating any squatters on the property and what we need to do while we work through the interesting components around this, which is not necessarily a normal situation. You have someone that has a track record that's been okay, they don't own a significant amount of properties. They were showing capability because of that and the ability to kind of do this one next to the other. And just so happens at this point, they happen to have a health issue and we're trying to figure out how best to handle that with the legal components of the LDA while maintaining the public safety concerns of the community as well as our public safety concerns as well.
I, I guess I'm, I'm just using it as an example, we don't need to go into the detail. The example of how we're actually going to address this block-by-block strategy, if we've got different timelines for receivership, for, you know, acquisition, so that we avoid this from happening again. Because we could have had, given all three of those, there's a legal issue with the third one, but all three of these properties to the same person to be able to do all at the same time, right? And, and by the way, none of the community members were ever engaged in sort of, well, there were people who were actively advocating, but not really engaged in terms of a developer who might be a partner in the community to be able to take the property. So, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out if this is going to continue to be par for the course in the new thinking around the, the disposition.
No, I think this example is one that is not par for the course. And as we talked about earlier in the hearing, in terms of what we're doing with the RFQ process, the community, the development components at the table. There will always be an issue with the timing of the construction, with the timing of the development because of the fact that the acquisition pieces and which tool we're using for acquisition all have different components in terms of that timeline. So whether or not it's a property that's being donated, a property that we're doing condemnation proceedings, a property that goes to receivership, a property that's through in REM, each tool has a different timeline. It is not all going to ever align perfectly, because if we waited until it was aligned perfectly, we'd be waiting even further. But by doing the approaches that we're doing with community on developing that developer pipeline, kind of having some geographic areas, kind of knowing where people are working, where developers are interested in working, we'll have a better understanding of how best to tackle so that when someone is starting on a property, that we know what the final acquisition is going to be for the next one. Is that same developer going to be in line as part of that? Are they going to be part of that whole block outcome and whole block approach? And in some cases, there may still be, you know, multiple developers working on a block as well. So is that what we want to see for par for the course? No. Is it perfect right now? No. Are we progressing to improve it? Yes.
And the maintenance piece that I asked earlier in terms of.
Yeah, we continue to look at increasing the maintenance component. That's a conversation that I've had with Director Moisev. And we are going to continue to evaluate as those properties come into the inventory in terms of the need for maintenance on those, as well as stabilization, because a number of the properties that are, that we are acquiring, we will be looking to do that emergency stabilization, which will help on the maintenance, which also acts as the, some of the developer incentive and appraisal gap financing that's needed to be able to get homeownership outcomes and outcomes for the city and the community.
I, I just didn't see it acknowledged here at all in this particular service in terms of the, the maintenance.
The maintenance gets, is on the capital side of the budget, so that falls on, on the capital side.
Okay, there was something on the capital side that I saw, but for specific blocks, I think.
No, we have a generalized property maintenance budget within, line item within the capital.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter, and then Councilman Stokes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I have a question with that line of questioning related to nuisance properties. There are a lot of property owners that have rental licensing. I'm wondering, what is the process or can we expedite the process to rescind those rental licenses that we know are nuisance properties in, in our districts? Like, what is that process? Because the only reason why I'm bringing that up is because we have so many of these properties in the district and I'm wondering if there is a way to expedite the process so that we, you know, so that these rental licensees can, can, can be rescinded? And kind of put this, this property owner on a list so that they can't actually rent again since they are nuisance property owners?
Um, I want to just make sure I'm hearing the question correct.
Yes, and that was a very roundabout way.
Specific to landlords that have rental licenses where the, it might be they have the rental license, but it's a nuisance? Or is it the work around unlicensed properties that are also, that are nuisance properties and working to bring them into compliance?
Yeah, so I am looking for the former. So the, I mean, you bring up a good point about the unlicensing rental properties. I'm more specifically focused on those property that have rental licensing, that are creating nuisances within our neighborhoods and what that process is like. And, you know, I know there is a process. I'm wondering if it can be expedited, because in my two years, I haven't really seen a rescind of any type of rental license on a few properties that we have in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The process one that would be with the complaint to then establish the facts around the complaint and have enough evidence there to support the decision to revoke the license. Under the current rental licensing code requirements, we would have to send a 10-day, 10-day notice to the property owner, the landlord, advising them of the desire to revoke their license. And then they would have the opportunity to request a hearing to challenge it. If that doesn't occur, then after the 10 days, we would revoke the license.
So that's a very expedited process from what we're experiencing. Can I ask, what is the, like, what's the issue of why certain licensing's have not been rescinded? I know I've sent a few you all as your way related to ones in Westport. And so from your timeline, it's more like a 10-day period that you just mentioned and we're waiting months.
Well, the, the initial piece would be the investigation part to establish enough evidence. So in some cases, what residents might be seeing. So in some cases, what residents might be seeing, we can't substantiate, and so we're not able to act or in sending the letter to actually do the revocation. But I'd have to, you know, explore any specifics and see where those are at, so I'm happy to follow up with you on that.
Sure. Mr. Chair, or whoever's, who's the chair? Oh, hello. I'd like to do a formal committee request, please. I'd like that process in writing, and then also the threshold of evidence needed to rescind a rental license. And I'd like that, let me say, two weeks. Thank you.
I'm going to follow up on my colleague. I know when we started this rental license housing, did say they had, didn't really have the staff. So my question is, how many people you have that's checking to make sure people had a rental license? Because I think that has a lot to do with it also. So you might have a staffing problem, so I don't know who can answer that, Commissioner.
So we actively utilize our code enforcement staff, as well as SIU, and then also other members of our teams across the board, because sometimes we've had issues come up in our emergency management's operation component. We've had it within our different rehab programs coming across unlicensed rentals for that enforcement. But that does remain something that we are actively looking at and continue to improve upon.
Thank you. Just another note, I know Commissioner Booker, I know he had some vacancies, but I have met code enforcement employees who actually quit because they went into some neighborhoods and they were threatened. So we, we might have a lot of openings in code enforcement, because certain neighborhoods, you know, the activity going on, they tell them don't come back there. So a lot of people were threatened. Am I correct, Commissioner Booker?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
So my last question is, adopt a lot, is whoever adopt responsible for cleaning it and cutting the grass? Can you explain to me the difference between that and a LDA? Somebody who have agreement with the city, that want to develop the lot or property, have not done it, but we continuously use our resources to cut and clean the lot for them. We can't even catch up with our own lots yet. So how do we now, you make community people cut and clean or adopt a lot, but somebody got a LDA, the grass can go 20 feet high, guess who cut it? They use city resources. So how can we change that? I think a lot of times, that's why we can't catch up on our own stuff, because we cutting LDA stuff that's not written, I guess, in the lease or contract. Deputy Commissioner Hessler, can you? Or I guess Commissioner...
I would say that part of that is that sometimes we have EMPs, which are the exclusive negotiating privileged periods, and then an LDA is the land disposition agreement, which would be executed, but sometimes in that LDA, it, it has terms around when the settlement would actually occur. So for a portion of an LDA, there are periods of time where settlement hasn't occurred, and the city still actually is actively the owner of, of that property until the settlement would occur for that, that piece. We can definitely, I hear your concern around, and I think, understand the question and the concern around costs associated with those agreements, for us to continue to kind of maintain, when there's an agreement in place, to sell the property, and, and having the entity that's going to be taking ownership step up to the place, step up to the plate for that maintenance. So we can evaluate that within the terms of the LDA.
So my follow-up, Commissioner, is, so if they have an LDA, the city still own the property?
Correct.
Okay. But they have the LDA, they want the property, they want to develop the property. So why we, you make community people cut and clean adopt a lot, and you tell the people that want to develop on it, you know, you don't really have to cut and clean it, because, you know, we still waiting for you to develop on it. That's a waste of city resources to me. We got enough lots that, we all know, our council people talking about never get cut on time, you know why? Because now we chasing other people's LDA, and some of them got 700, 800 properties, they might be all lots. So now we using all our resources to cut that, when we should be cutting, or could be cutting other properties that, that need to be cut right away. That's why we got to hire contractors, because we can't even catch up on our own stuff, because we got LDAs with everybody. Suppose they don't develop right away, we are still cutting and cleaning that lot, using city resources, for, to me, it's a waste. So my suggestion is, how can we now, if you have a LDA, then you got to be responsible for cleaning and cutting the lots. It's not fair to community people, you make them do it and adopt a lot, but a LDA, because the LDA, they're like, nope, the city, and they, and I've seen some of them would let their grass grow taller than Councilman Conway. You know that? And guess what?
That's very tall.
And, and what happens is, is just sit and sit and sit, then we get the phone calls from the community, from the community presidents. We got to do better with that, because we wasting our resources. So my suggestion is, is any way we can make sure that is in their contract or whatever your language is.
I would say that in our more modern LDAs, especially for the larger sites, we are trying to make sure that we have that language in there, that they take on maintenance at a certain point within the LDA. So one good example is in Park Heights, where we had a very large site, and what we were looking for as part of the RFP process was somebody who would commit to having some interim uses there, and to actually maintain the property. And so they actually partnered with one of the community organizations to make sure that they could do that in the Park Heights site. So I think with our RFPs going forward, we're pushing that more and more, and looking at that as one of the evaluation tools for who we're going to select as the developer.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, that sounds like some tall grass. Councilman, Councilman Burnett, and then Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we get an update on, on the, update on the new system for posting rental licenses to CodeMap? We, we still get a lot of calls from folks wondering if a property is a rental or not, and we were told at one point that this information would be uploaded to CodeMap, so they could easily see or confirm if there's a rental license issued, the history of the license. I know, I know that you can go on a couple other websites under the DHCD webpage where you can search for addresses and, and that kind of thing, but was trying to see if it would be a little bit easier to access via CodeMap at some point.
The way it's set up currently within, within CodeMap, when the public goes on, is that there's a, a link that takes you to the, to the website, where you would then search to see if the property is licensed or not. So there's not a icon or an identifier specific in CodeMap, and part of that is, we're currently bridged across two different systems with the upgrade that we did this past year, and that it's, you're usually looking for more information than just whether or not it's licensed, but when it expires. So instead, we drive, drive the customer to the, the site that then gives you that additional information.
Yeah, I mean, I'm on here now, and I don't see the link, but we can work offline. I just think...
It should say licensing.
Yeah, I see the licensing, and I clicked on it, and it's...
It says, there's no record because they're not licensed.
Oh. All right, we're good. Thank you. So problem solved in real time with my colleague here. I did have more, but I'll wait for the next round, Mr. Chair.
That does not count as a question, please proceed.
All right. Next question. Can you provide us insight into why garages aren't eligible for interim foreclosure?
You said why they are not?
Are not.
Did you say garages?
They, they would be...
Garages are, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Does that count as a question?
Is that a question?
As long as they're vacant. Are they vacant?
Yeah.
They have to have a vacant building notice, but yeah.
Okay. I think the last one has been answered, so yeah, on my list, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohen.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, and your team. Do want to just appreciate the responsiveness. I know that, you know, we take a lot of incoming from constituents who have real concerns, and Mr. Hessler here and others are often the repository of some of our frustration, which is sort of filtering our constituents' frustration. But I do want to appreciate that, at least from my office's perspective, you always do get back to us. It may not be sort of what we would want, but, and, and I do believe that you need much more capacity, and that like, if they could clone you and Booker and all, all the other folks you got back there, like, we'd be in a much better shape as a city. But I did want to just appreciate that, that I think this is a agency that responds and doesn't hide from us or the public. I want to ask specifically about the vacancy issue in our city. You know, some estimates say we're losing about $200 million a year from the 15,000-ish plus vacancies that we have. We all know the issues with fires, with, you know, what folks have mentioned around grass growing tall, the multiple 311 and 911 complaints. It just adds up, and the Bloomberg and Hopkins did this study, I think they found about $200 million worth of lost revenue, just dealing with these 15,000 a year vacancies. It seems like other cities, and I'm specifically thinking of Detroit, have moved more aggressively than we have since their bankruptcy to decrease the amount of vacant stock that they have. I'm pretty sure that there's, they had significantly more vacancies, but that theirs have gone down way more than ours have. And so I'm wondering about how we are aggressively working to tackle that issue, because it seems like one where we are just forfeiting potential revenue, we are paying for having to maintain and deal with these problematic properties all day long. And I am specifically interested in the land bank, which I know a previous mayor had introduced, and my colleague from the 14th District is very interested in and has introduced. Just thinking about how we can collectively tackle this problem, because I don't think it's just a DHCD problem, and if we put all of it on your agency to solve without meaningfully engaging the private sector, nonprofits, developers, universities, et cetera, I think it's just way too big of a problem to handle, but I think it's a problem that we have to handle for the good of our city.
No, I agree, and I would say that, you know, the mayor, Mayor Scott, CEO Leach, myself, Michael, Director Moisev, have all been actively looking at specifically the components around financing, and we have been having those conversations with a broad number of stakeholders. We've done, and I know that we're out meeting with some of our financial partners, our foundation partners, our public sector partners, et cetera. There are some components that do separate us a little bit from Detroit in terms of some costs. I mean, generalized, in terms of Detroit, you're talking about majority, if not all, single-family detached stick frame building, which even the demolition cost on that, in terms of some of the things that they did, and some of the extra funding that they had years ago, after some of the settlements, helped them tackle some of those demolition pieces associated with that. I can say that we're actively engaging and evaluating the financial components of this work, in terms of not just the cost savings from tackling vacancies, because it's more exponential just from the potential lost revenue from property taxes or something. The exponential savings are even greater when we talk about the health savings and the impacts on our children and the impacts on our older adults. So we're working very diligently and as a partnership to be able to bring in all of those resources, as well as addressing that and having the conversations at the state level, too, in terms of how we can leverage and look at the state resources that needed. So definitely don't think that this is just kind of like a city goes this alone type of approach. It's going to take every single member of the public, working in concert with the administration and with the council, to be able to, to, to address the vacant property issue and continue to lower that. We have some great new tools in the toolbox, which we're actively, which we're actively deploying, and we continue to remain steadfast in, in tackling this and working in partnership to, to address it.
No, and I do appreciate all that, and I agree that there's really an alignment of interests right now between the city and the state around this issue. I mean, the leadership from the Moore administration, I think is huge, to help us be able to get there, and not just like demolish properties like previous governor did, but then leave them for us to deal with. But I, I just think now is the time, and if we don't act aggressively, I think we'll be pretty stuck as a city, whatever that looks like. I am curious specifically on the land bank, why that doesn't seem like an appropriate tool, as other cities have shown.
I think a land bank in general is not a panacea. It's not, you know, I think it depends on the jurisdictions, and it depends on the needs, and the administration continues to evaluate all the different options available in terms of looking at, you know, the approaches and, and techniques and organizations to take the, to tackle the problem.
Appreciate that. Seems like a good tool in the toolbox, but again, thank you, thanks for the work you do, and thank you, Commissioner and Mr. Chair.
And Councilman, and I do want to note, we're very proud of the fact that as of this morning, we are at 14,141 vacant buildings in the city, so we are now much closer to the 14,000 range versus the 15,000-plus number that is still, you know, spoken about in regards to vacancies.
Which is great, and we're still, I think, not moving quickly enough, but I appreciate the progress that has been made.
Thank you, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, one of the big, big, big opportunities, I think, for the city is having people invest in their properties, and of course, permitting is necessary to do that. I recently had a constituent reach out to me, and they were trying to get in touch with the permits office and had a really tough time. They called and didn't get a reply, and they finally went to the permits office, and they were told, oh yeah, we don't answer the phones here. Whatever the case is, I'm, I'm really curious what's going on there, and do we have the resources? Do we have vacancies in the office? What do we need to do to make sure that, you know, when folks are trying to invest in their properties, they have everything they need?
So I'm surprised that a staff member would say that they don't answer the phone unless they're the person that's responsible for meeting with the public, and their specific job duty doesn't involve the, the call management component. Deputy Hessler and myself and Chief of Staff Davis have actually worked with a partnership with the comptroller's office on a call center that is actually starting to launch today, actually today, for a number of our different divisions in terms of being able to manage those calls. As we've talked about before, you know, we process over 40,000 permits, we have a staff of about 18 that do that work across the board. So sometimes staff is busy actually assisting on another phone call and, and not able to answer the call. So we've been actively engaging in other ways to tackle that, just with kind of phone management and phone call management. So that's something that's happening, kind of launching today, testing, and then we'll continue to roll that out across the permits, other sections of Deputy Hessler's shop, and then also looking at other sections of the agency as well.
I appreciate that. I, I look forward to what comes of the call center, I, I hope it's going to be really, really helpful. I think the other component of that is getting in touch with inspectors to either schedule the inspection or to coordinate whenever that comes through. I think the other component of that is getting in touch with inspectors to either schedule the inspection or to coordinate whenever that comes through. Do inspectors get city phones? And are folks able to call those folks during regular business hours? Because there are folks that have spoken to that have had trouble getting in touch with inspectors.
So for the scheduling of permit-related inspections, that should not be an issue at all because you don't do any of the scheduling with an inspector and you haven't for probably 15-plus years. So all of the, all of the scheduling is either done through an IVR system where you call in and schedule it and about 20% of the people do it that way. And then the other 80% go online and schedule it through the online permitting system. So they're able to go in for our, most of our permits, if you call before 1 o'clock, you can schedule next day inspection. Our mechanical permits run a little bit longer in like four to five days right now. And that is partly due to the number of staff members and the demand there. But we also, we have, in that area, we have one new hire that started recently and we have two positions that we're seeking to fill currently. So that should help in that respect. When your inspection is scheduled, the morning of, an inspector will reach out to the number that's left through either the IVR or the online to the person that arranged for the inspection to confirm that they're coming, when they'll be there and go over any issues. Sometimes people don't leave a number, so we're not able to reach them. And in some cases, we can't go out and do the inspection because they haven't scheduled the right inspection or they're not, they haven't gotten all, like if they're looking for a building final, but they haven't gotten their electrical final yet, it's not time for a building final. So we'll give them that information and allow them to correct that before going out. But we do, do reach out to all the customers that schedule inspections and scheduling should not be a problem.
Got it. So it sounds like everything is done centrally, generally?
Yes.
So folks should not have to call the inspector?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up on Councilman Cohen's question. I appreciate the Commissioner's answers in terms of like, we're looking at all the solutions and that's important. So it wasn't a no. So that was good.
Councilwoman, please brief, brief follow-up.
So I understand. And the other piece is just to make it super clear to that, to the, that the number that Chief of Staff just talked about isn't a number, it's a good number. We're making progress, but that's not the city dispersing all of those properties. That's because we're only dispersing about 100 each year. It's a public, it's a private market and a lot of other players and there's still more vacancies coming on. So I think it's good progress, but let's be real clear about what the numbers are and what that looks like. I'm going to switch gears and talk about the, I want to talk about the backlog in grants management and CDBG for catalyst grants and and where we are on the process of trying to get people their money. Before the pandemic and also during the pandemic, obviously, we were seeing organizations only being able to get their money, you know, within 15 months of a contract or not even a contract, which that's just unreasonable, given the fact that there's a lot of organizations that just don't have the cash flow to be able to get the, you know, be able to do the reimbursements because the CDBG is a reimbursement and the catalyst grant is a grant. So I'm just curious, Commissioner, where are we in the reform of that office? Because I'm still hearing that there's a backlog of at least a year on a couple of them. And I think that we, you know, just want to know where we are on those.
So one thing, just quickly, is that the target for fiscal year '24 in terms of disposition is one of the lowest targets. But historically, over the last several years, we've actually been over 200 and some for disposition per year, which falls in line with a number of different organizations across the state as well as the country in terms of property disposition numbers. When we talk about the CDBG contracting and so forth, we've actually caught up on the backlog and worked with the comptroller's office as well as our team and were able to execute the, what we call the CD 48 operating grants and worked on a process with the Board of Estimates approval. And I started executing those agreements within 24 hours after the Board of Estimates approved. And we've already completed the execution of 65 of those since that Board of Estimates approval, which would be in three months or less. Some of that was just getting actually the final information or waiting on signatures from the grantees side of the staff. So the new system in terms of process system is actually working and we're actually already starting on the CD 49s. To get that, we've submitted the CD 49 Annual Action Plan to HUD for review. And the staff has already started on compiling. We streamlined the budget template actually across not just CDBG with Deputy Commissioner Correa, but also for CCG as well. And the new round of operating grants for CCG will be utilizing the same approach as what we put in place for CDBG. So there wouldn't be a delay there. There are some delays on the capital side, which makes sense because the capital projects are different, especially on CDBG with the federal requirements that are required as well as some of the CCG capital side as well, in terms of sometimes we're the first in or near the first in on the capital stack and sometimes we're the last. So that would be the place there. So that has already been approved. Those have been working and we're going to be executing and putting together the process for the CD 49s as soon as we get the approval from HUD, from the Annual Action Plan. The grantees were very responsive because part of being able to do this is actually having the grantees complete their updated budget information in a timely manner. We actually put out like a two-week turnaround time and the grantees were able to do that so that we had that in order to put forth the bulk approval to the board. So we're confident in working through that. And plus, we've also seen, once we're getting the invoices and information in terms of paying, that as long as the draws are correct in terms of numbers with the correct backup information and what's needed from an audits and compliance standpoint, that with the new workday system across the board, across the agency, we've been seeing contractors and vendors actually being paid within 24, 48, 72 hours once things get into the system. So I would say that that upgrade is actually working and we're seeing that across the board with our grantees.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Chair. Mr. Hessler, I want to go back to the threshold of citations being issued and followed up on nuisance properties. What's the protocol for re-sighting, re-siting those properties once an inspector goes out?
Councilwoman, just to make sure I understand the question correctly, you're referencing nuisance properties in relation to the rental licensing piece or just in general?
Yeah, so nuisance properties related to like, you know, having to go and board up, board, board up a property again. Like what, what, how do you all determine the threshold that you kind of determine whether a property is a nuisance property? So in my brain, I'm thinking of the number of 911 calls on a particular property. I'm thinking about the times where Erica and her wonderful team have to go out and, you know, work with Yvonne from DPW to board up a property. I'm thinking of the time where residents are calling 311. Is there a, is, what's the, what's the process for that? The only reason why I bring that up is because I just went on CodeMap and for a property that we've been calling about for lease the past three to four months, about 845 Reinhardt, which is a known nuisance house, they only have three citations that's listed in CodeMap. And so I wanted to know what that process is and where the disconnect is because it's not lining up with the emails that we receive, the emails that the constituents have sent over to 311 and the number of police calls that are happening on this particular location.
I'm actually going to refer this question to Deputy Commissioner Booker.
Okay.
The question particularly going around the policy of issuing citations on reoccurring violations at a property, particularly vacant properties and reboarding and that kind of work.
Yeah, we used to have in our standard operating procedure, once we issued about six citations, then we would refer it for pattern and practice, a pattern and practice case. At that point, we hand, we are handing it off to code enforcement, legal, for them to take the appropriate action at that step.
Okay. Can we check on 845 Reinhardt? Erica, you know, that's an email that you've been copied on. I don't believe Deputy Director Booker, you've been copying on those emails. But I'm just making sure that the process, the QA process that you all have in-house is actually working because what we're seeing and the public is seeing is not matching up with what I know is being submitted through 311, 911 in my office. So if that can be a formal committee request, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed the number of light applications processed has been going up. We've seen a lot of interest there and that's great. Great to see folks using the program. I know, I also noticed we increased the target. So how many light applications were received in 2022? And then how many applications have we received thus far in 2023?
I'm going to double check on some of that that we have. Were you looking for fiscal year?
Fiscal year '22?
'22.
Yep. And thus far in '23, given we're coming to an end.
We have a number, might need to get back to you on the exact number for the application. So light is the intake and assessment unit that actually evaluates the applications for all of the different programs, including weatherization, officer rehabilitation services, lead hazard reduction. And then also, which is tied into that, the housing upgrades to benefit seniors. So I think it would be good for us to kind of be able to give you a little bit more background information on not just the number of applications, but how that kind of plays out across the programs. And plus, we try to leverage all the programs under that.
Sure. No, that would be helpful. And I guess with that request, I would love to know the backlog and the folks that are waiting on assistance or responses from light and for hubs. And I'm curious how long it takes on average for folks to interact with the program. And then just a matter of understanding priorities, does someone who's older get higher priority for these programs? Do we account for age?
We actually have some accounting and I'll ask Deputy Commissioner Hart to step in, but we do have accounting for age, also families with young children and emergency situations.
Great.
No, there's nothing to add, but that's absolutely correct. So it would also, like I said, emergencies, the severity of the case, lead cases, where there's a poisoned child, things like that get expedited.
And do we have a sense of the average amount of time for those prioritized applications to go through?
We don't have necessarily an average amount of time because what we find is that each family is going to be different. So it is dictated based upon the family situation when the application comes in. So sometimes we have tangled titles. It all depends on what's going on in that household. So documentation and documentation collection for audit purposes would depend on how fast that application gets out of light intake and assessment onto the respective programs. We would probably be able to give you a better timeframe of the time that it comes out of intake and assessment to actually get to, you know, to scope and completion. We could give you a timeframe for that. But we could, we could also give you an average because our system can tell you, but the date, the timeframe may be skewed because each case is different. Some might take two days, some might take six, eight months if we have to refer to legal services to get the deed issue or wait for somebody to get pay stubs or whatever it may be. So it all depends on the families as well.
Okay. Thank you. I'll wait for the information once you get it over. Thank you.
Commissioner, can you talk a little bit about ways that the department is engaging with the community, both in structured formats as well as unstructured?
Absolutely. You know, we have a number of different ways that the agency actually interacts with the public and, and our residents. And that ranges everything from just the general website, our social media. We also have webinars that we've been doing. A number of these are available, both on kind of permitting components, which is actually one of the things that we found out through the survey, which is that some people were not aware that we had permit training webinars and survey, permit training webinars or access to that, or how to kind of purchase vacant properties or what the permitting process is for a vacant property. We've also in partnership with the mayor's office through the neighborhood subcabinet, have our community conversations that are in the impact investment areas as well as the neighborhood subcabinet in terms of involving our community and doing that work with the impact investment areas. We also have our areas of kind of our community asset building areas. So there are a number of different communities that we meet with on a quarterly basis. So while some of the impact investment areas, it's on kind of a monthly or every six, six week, we have other communities where we're meeting with them on a quarterly basis to talk about issues within their community, everything from vacant property reduction to illegal dumping to code enforcement, to how to assist existing residents and work there. We also have our affordable housing, public, our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the public meetings associated with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, our external newsletter. We have the, you know, one of the things that's going to be a little bit better in terms of its use and ease is our e-permits bulletin board in terms of how that communicates and residents communicate there. And then also we've launched in January of 2023, our Coffee Break with Alice. So the second Friday of every month, you can come and at noon and join a Zoom and we have a number of different questions that people submit ahead of time. And then we kind of go through some of those and then we take questions, real time, in person, you know, virtually in person, but real time questions in terms of helping kind of unlock some things or give insight into areas where people just have questions about operations or how does something work or what have we been sharing in there. We also now have on staff, you know, we have a number of different staff members that do community engagement work, depending upon whether or not it's the homeownership and housing preservation division or the development division. But we also now have on staff person, somebody that is kind of our community engagement, community outreach coordinator that will be coordinating that across the entire agency so that we also have a presence at even more of our community association meetings, neighborhood association meetings, et cetera, to have that. We also conduct surveys on a regular basis. We've sent out postcards and letters and will continue to work with community and work with council on how we engage with community as a result, as a, in terms of resulting in how we do our work.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to the, to the permits, I, in a previous hearing, you had talked about that the reforms would be done by January of 2024 and earlier today you said the spring. So can you talk a little bit about, about that part? And I have a follow-up.
Yeah. So some of that has just changed in terms of a couple of different things. One, finalizing the scope and kind of negotiating and finalizing that with, with the potential vendors and kind of getting that information back, as well as we did some additional community engagement work over the last couple of months that have helped inform the length of that process, especially as it relates to building in the training time. So when we talk about kind of kind of that late winter, kind of spring 2024, that takes in consideration the fact that we cannot just drop a new system into the laps of the public, as well as the staff. And the communication and training around that will need to be robust and timely because of the permits, as well as the need that we have to be able to migrate data from existing systems into the new system as well.
So the, the, it's just the systems, you know, trying to deal with that. But I was wondering about the, not just the training of staff on this too, because one of the thing, one of the complaints that we get also is just, sometimes the inspectors may not have either good information, or they are hard to work with. I, I believe strongly that the reason we have so much construction, at least in my district, and I think I speak for my colleagues, there are so many, so, so much construction going on right now without permits. And it's frustrating, because, you know, we'll, we'll call, and Mr. Jones is amazing, he's on it, he definitely gets his people out there to inspect. And I just want to try to avoid that from happening, because then, you know, despite the fact that we had the law that passed in October of 2021, there are still people that are selling properties with VBNs on them, where it's not fully rehabbed. Or even if it wasn't a VBN property, I have two cases where it wasn't a VBN property, but the rehab was done so terribly, because people didn't use permits. It's super frustrating, and I'm sure it's frustrating for you. So I'm, I'm very hopeful that this reforms would have, would help to avoid that. But at the same time, I think we just need to figure out two things. One, in, in the meantime, you know, just trying to get the word out that people really need to get permits. And two, what happens when somebody ends up buying a property that, you know, ends up having terrible rehab, that they end up having to spend so much more money, or they have to try to get the, you know, VBN off of there. I think those are two pieces that still need to be addressed in terms of, we, it's very difficult for me to have to wait until 2024 for any action on, on those pieces.
So I don't, I think that action's actually happening on those pieces now, especially around the work without a permit. That is something that is a pet peeve of, I think, all of us.
Everybody.
In this room.
Yeah.
Including myself. I have an anecdotal personal story, where last year I called to get an installation of a, of a type of air conditioning unit, and I was narrowing down the, the estimates. And my last question for people, you know, on two companies, one was over the phone, one was by text message, was okay, like, how long to get the supplies and pull a permit to be able to do the work? And on the phone, one person said to me, oh, we don't need to pull a permit for that. And then by text message, by text.
Pull permit for everything.
By text message, the other contractor, by text message, said, oh, we don't need to pull a permit. And yes, Councilwoman Porter, that is my response that I had as well.
Yeah.
And as soon as they found out, that I said, well, no, there, I wish I could have seen the look on the faces.
On their faces.
But I can tell by the silence on the other end of the phone, as well as the length of time it took to respond to the text message, that there was a significant situation.
Right.
We've talked internally, I immediately called Deputy Hessler about this. I think one of the biggest components around this is also education, which we could partner with the council on, in terms of educating our constituents. Because there's also the component too, where some of the contractors are like, well, we're going to charge you an additional $500.
That's right.
Or $800.
That's right.
Or an exorbitant amount of money.
Crazy.
To pull a permit that needs to be pulled, does not cost that in any way, shape, or form, is available to do online. And a lot of those permits are also the ones that are being approved in 72, 96 hours. We're not, you know, those aren't the ones sometimes that are more complicated, that are taking a longer period of time. So we have been talking about how to continue to educate and do that. That isn't something that we're going to be waiting on in terms of a system. That needs to happen now. We're actively working on it. Same thing, and I would say, you know, Deputy Hessler and his team have, have worked out an excellent process in terms of helping residents that have purchased a property with a vacant building notice, and to help those residents get through that process and get that used and occupancy permit taken care of as soon as possible. So that isn't something that we need to wait on as well.
Thank, yeah, I knew that the commissioner, Deputy Commissioner was working on that. The, the piece about the education is also looking at, I know there are repeat offenders, and so basically saying, like, you know, is there, is there another enforcement mechanism to say, I can think of one, right in my district. They perpetually don't get permits, and it's frustrating. So there's got to be a, a challenge that we can do in terms of a court system to really start to, like, set an example for the fact that, like, people just need to do this. Include us in all of the social media and everything else that you're doing to be able to educate folks, because it's also educating the public, the homeowner, the neighbor, you know, also what to look for. Yeah, in terms of calling 311, but also the fact that, you know, even for homeowners to be like, oh, is the box at the end of the contract checked, like we had passed in the law? And, you know, those pieces as well, because it's clear to me that the realtors and the title companies aren't do that, doing that, although I think we're working through that particular process. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have one more question related to the URPs for commercial properties. Do the code inspectors, do the code inspectors, when they go out to those commercial corridors, do they adhere to the URPs that the neighborhoods have set out? So there, from what I understand, there are design requirements in the URPs, but what's happening is in some of the commercial corridors, the high grass and weeds, the graffiti, the code enforcement is not being, being met?
I would, Deputy Booker can take that, but I do know that, you know, the, the officers are educated and trained on all the different components.
On residential and commercial. And I think Deputy Director.
Overlying, overlaying components of the code, as well as requirements.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's not so much the URP, it's the fact that it is a code violation.
Okay.
Right? It just happens to fall within the URP.
Okay.
So the, the inspectors are property maintenance inspectors. So it's not specifically commercial or residential, it's property maintenance, period, across the city. So if it's a code violation, whether it's in the URP or not.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're going to cite it if it's a code violation.
Okay. But I know particular ones, like I know Pig Town has one, and I think Brooklyn, they have specific design requirements within their URP. Are the code inspectors adding on that extra layer of the design requirements that's listed in the URP when they're doing code enforcement violations?
I yield to Deputy Hessler.
That sounds, Councilwoman, like you're referring more to when there's permitted activity at the property, and that's where the design requirements would come in. So our inspectors should be reviewing whatever is in that permit, and the design requirements should be incorporated into that permit, depending on the work that's going on. So we do look at that.
Okay. I'm going to follow up on a few properties.
Sure.
Because the reason why, that, my questions stem from particular issues that we are currently working on. And so what you're, what you're saying in this hearing just isn't lining up with what's in the actual messages, so we'll definitely follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take, take a moment to acknowledge some of the great work you guys are doing in Service 809, expansion and attraction of businesses, and particularly around the net number of new and expanding businesses in commercial corridors, particularly because that has had an impact on my corridor and the York Road corridor. Lots of great businesses have been opening up there, and I, I just want to commend you guys for the work there. I know we're recovering from the, from the pandemic, but we're seeing that number steadily climb up, and I think it's really, really important that we continue to attract and keep businesses here, but then bring in new businesses, because those are the ones that serve our community. So just wanted to, you know, tip of the hat.
Councilman, one, just point of clarification on that. That's actually a service that is administered by BDC.
Oh.
809, 810, I guess, 809 and on are services that live within the housing budget.
Got it.
But they are, it's a pass, it's a mechanism for passing through funding to those quasars.
Well, thank you for passing on money to BDC.
No, you're welcome. And I will say that, you know, I definitely was not, if Director Larson didn't, you know, I, I was not going to take that from our agency. But I will say that, just as a side note, that we do collaborate very closely with BDC, as well as Live Baltimore, who's also one of the services within there, and that, you know, when we talk about vibrant communities, we're not just talking about residential properties, but we are also talking about commercial properties and those commercial corridors, and what needs to be done to assist, you know, those businesses and looking at that. So it's important to us, but we can't take credit for that one.
All good. It'll be acknowledged regardless. Great job, guys. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions?
Yes, I have one last one.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of just quicker ones, I think. I think that you've been on emails about the water shut-off for, when there's a vacant building notice on the property. I understand that you're working with DPW on actually how to make that happen, how to go retroactively over the 14,000 vacant properties as well. Can you talk a little bit about that, but also want to make sure that you know that BGE is interested in this as well, because they want to turn off the power when there's a vacant building? So, yeah. So just talk a little bit about how that's, how that's going, and what's the timeline for the water shut-off piece. I, I realize that BGE needs to be included in any discussions on the BGE side.
Yes, so we have been working closely with DPW. We've created a priority system for the 14,141 vacant properties. The initial batch of approximately 500 properties are properties that are in the demo pipeline, so they're the least likely to need water in the future. And then we've prioritized it on down based on how long a vacant building notice has been on the property, whether or not there's any permit activity, what the future development plans are, so that we can maximize the efficiency in, in shutting off water to properties that are least likely to need water in the near future. So that's underway and, and working with DPW on that, and we have meetings, ongoing meetings with them regarding that. In reference to BGE, we look, we're open to that. We've had meetings in the past with BGE, because we work with them closely within demolitions, to make sure that gas and electric are both cut off, and have provided them with lists of vacant properties in the past, similar to what we're doing with DPW now, where we're like, these are the ones that are scheduled to be demoed, and here are our priorities. We have them go out and cut. All properties are demolished. It, it, we've gotten a lot of pushback from BGE just on their capacity, and it does take longer than it should to get properties that we need cut, cut. So I welcome the discussion of how we would expand that to include things that are beyond just what's being demolished.
I've just had a preliminary conversation with them, because they were curious about it, and so I think it's worth, but thank you for addressing it, and, and really starting to think about the priorities in terms of what makes sense to do first. Obviously, it's important for, for lots of reasons. The, colleagues, do you all have any other questions?
I have one more, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Do we have an update deadline for the middle neighborhood strategy?
Yeah, the middle neighborhood strategy is one that is actively being kind of evaluated and employed. It's a partnership between the Department of Housing and Community Development, Department of Planning, Live Baltimore, as well as Healthy Neighborhoods, Inc., as an outside organization, with a review of, of those neighborhoods. There also is an update that we can provide in terms of the targeted work, because that is an area.
Yes, that's what I mean, yeah.
Under, and, and what plans and programs. So we can provide that briefing.
Okay, thank you so much. And the reason why I bring that up is because Live Baltimore, I know that they've received, they're doing a lot of great work in those middle neighborhoods. I believe they had a reduction in their funding, if I'm not mistaken, and so I want to really make sure that we're sup, we're supplementing the marketing and engagement within those middle neighborhoods, so that we can kind of get people into homes in those middle neighborhoods. Yeah. Thank you.
The question I have is around Guilford Elementary. I know we have a number of schools that we are putting back on the market to sell. That process has been pretty lengthy, a couple of years now. I'm, I'm curious where we are with that, that project, and what we need to do to make it useful property again?
I can, I can answer this one. So with Guilford Elementary, of course, it has that specific deed restriction around educational use.
Right.
So we did do, after the initial expression of interest, we requested that the two applicants who had said that they were going to do an educational use, put in a full proposal. Only one of them did. So we have been working directly with them to try and see if they're going to get to the point where they have the financial capacity to it. We did recently get some unfortunate news that it was broken into recently, so I'm concerned that that is going to make it more difficult for the interested charter school to be able to move forward. So we're going to have to reevaluate that and talk with them about the damage that was caused, and see if they're going to be able to move forward, or else we'll have to go back to the community and talk about other options, potentially lifting that deed restriction.
I appreciate that. I think, you know, we, I think we talked about this a little bit with maybe DGS, just, one, the maintenance of the properties, but then, two, the speed with which we can turn over those properties is really important. If there's anything I can do or should do, please do let me know.
Yeah, we'll definitely be coming to you with, to have that conversation with the community. I will say the DGS is in the process of updating their maintenance on all of, and their security, and specifically for the surplus schools. And unfortunately, Guilford was the next on the list to receive the enhanced security, and then that break-in happened. They were supposed to be getting that security panels that they're putting in.
Thank you.
It's my turn.
It's, it's your turn, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last time we talked, we had a hearing about the rental licensing. My colleagues had asked a lot of great questions about that. One of the things that we heard, though, was that half of the rental properties are actually licensed. And so what are we, it's been, I think, frustrating for folks to have, you know, unlicensed properties. I'm thoroughly in favor of strengthening the law to try to have a little bit more enforcement of the, of the law in terms of, like, literally, if you're intentionally not, you know, registering your property or to, or licensing your property, you probably shouldn't be doing business in Baltimore. But I'm wondering if you're, you've thought about that a little bit more since the hearing, in terms of what are the strategies to, obviously, sometime, at one point, it was a systems issue, where folks couldn't use the system, so we couldn't expect them to be licensed, but I think that's already been taken care of. So if you could talk a little bit more about how we're going to get that percentage down, that would be super.
Yeah, the system is up and running, and you can and should be licensing and registering your property online. We've increased the focus on issuing citations, so anytime we're doing an investigation, I mentioned earlier, skip trace investigations, anytime we're doing one of those, if it's a property registration or licensing issue, those, that property and other properties that company or individual may own are getting cited, in addition to any other 311 complaints or other things that drive us to properties. And then we also get referrals in from some of the service providers through rights counsel, when they're, when they're dealing with properties that are not licensed. So we're doing that. We do have plans with the two additional people that we get in, that'll help us with some of, of that staffing, and, and we'll be launching some more proactive approaches to enforcement around licensing, so looking at different data sources and matching up to see where there's rental properties that aren't in our system, and then going after them with the citations to, to bump up the number.
Great, thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions?
Yes.
The floor is yours. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I don't know if I beat up my colleague here. She may have another one. The hubs funding and the light program, I think, obviously are great programs. Just want to make sure that they're getting more operating dollars to be able to process the applications. Is it the ARPA money or through the allocation that they have here?
So we actually have staff coming on board that is actually through ARPA for part of the ARP application for hubs. We've actually also been actively hiring positions and processing applications across the board for both the social service coordinators. And then we have available Deputy Commissioner Hart, remind me, it's two, I believe we have one or two human service worker positions as well that we're adding, plus the additional ARPA staff. So in terms of capacity, we're, we feel confident with the capacity with the funding that's available.
And to civic works and to other hubs, hubs partners to be able to have some more capacity?
So the, we can talk a little bit more about how that structure works, because it doesn't necessarily flow from some of the capital dollars in terms of how the leveraging occurs.
Sure.
So we can kind of work through that with you, I think, offline in terms of how that partnership works.
Yeah, I think that the backlog isn't because we don't have money now. It's because the, it's just hard to get to everybody in terms of the operating capacity. Yeah. I just have a couple more, but I know my other colleagues might have some.
One quick one. Code map has been a little bit slow and glitchy sometimes. Do we have any idea if we have planned to update it or to help in addressing any of those issues?
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in.
Okay.
It's in regard to code map, not HR. There was some glitchiness. There was a, I guess, I'm getting a little technical past my abilities. They didn't cover it in law school. But there were some issues, and the IP address had to be changed. So some people are having problems there where, where it's still directing, you know, it's saved in their file, and it's still directing them to the wrong IP address, in which case it does pick up sometimes, but not always. And then it's, it's kind of glitchy or slow. So we do work closely with BCIT on those issues. But I would say anybody listening, if you use code map regularly, you might want to go in, clear your cache, and go onto the website and kind of redirect your computer to the current IP address. And that may solve a lot of your problems.
Good, good. Thank you. When did we update it? When did we update the, the IP?
That was like, six weeks ago that they updated it. So we were, there was about a week or two where there was a little bit of a bumpy road there. But once they made those changes at BCIT, it helped. But I think some people still feel it because they haven't gone in and cleared their cache and redirected to the new IP address.
Okay.
I'd also add to just please email me if you're having code map issues directly. Because either we'll troubleshoot, we can troubleshoot it directly with you, or it might be an IT issue that will be helpful for, to let our Director Row know about.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't see in the increased allocations money for the comprehensive housing plan. Is that in planning or is that here, reflected here?
That's actually reflected in the current fiscal year 23.
Fiscal year 23 budget. And can you tell us the status of, of how that's going in terms of the RFP and all of that?
Yeah, we've received responses, and those are being reviewed now.
Okay, so you, so you're in review. When do you think, you anticipate starting the process?
I want to confer with, we're reviewing-
Can, excuse me, Commissioner Kennedy and I have a chance to confer on that, because the timeline has been shifted due to my special assignment to the mayor's office.
Sure.
Thank you.
Understood. Yeah, I'll make it a request just to add it on to the list.
The coat rack is on the way out the door. If you want to grab all your hats on the way out when we're done.
True enough. So that was a request just to get the timeline and process for the, for the comprehensive housing plan. Okay.
Just to confer, it still is in partnership with the planning department as part of the comprehensive housing, the comprehensive plan for the city. So I just want to clarify that as well.
Understood, that it's, you know, almost like a subset and a kind of a deeper dive into that, yeah. And then the last thing is, we'll have a couple more, but I'll make this one. What is the, DHCD is one of the departments that's at risk for not spending all of the ARPA, ARPA money. I know that you've got a plan for how to make sure that all, we are not leaving a dollar on the table. Can you talk a little bit more about what that looks like in terms of making, just making sure that DHCD is on task to spend all that money, which I know you want to spend all of it, so.
Yeah. And so we are on task with that. We work very closely with the mayor's office of recovery programs. We actually prioritize the impact investment areas, as well as one of the first affordable housing capital projects as part of the ARPA spend. So one of the things that is a little wonky is that I know that in the reporting from MORP and so forth, it looks at kind of, you know, like spent. So there are a number of projects that have, you know, encumbrances in terms of the acquisitions that we're doing with the funding, where that is going to take time, because we have to have the money to be able to show that we have it to be able to do the acquisition. And then we'll see that actually starting to flow more in fiscal year 24. The same with the other capital projects that we have in there, as well as some of the ARPA funding projects associated with the prevention and elimination of blight. And that work is augmenting some of the other funding we had. So it's like, timing of everything to ensure that the funding is being spent in the timeline as appropriate. So we're confident that, A, we're going to see an increase of spending in fiscal year 24, and also to meet the deadlines as needed by the mayor's office of recovery programs.
My worry was just, costs are going up. And so, you know, as we have ARPA money in the capital stack of some of these big projects, whether or not they're in jeopardy or whether we need to sound the alarm and try to get more money into those projects, I'm particularly obviously thinking about the one in my district, but there's others across the city. So you're, you're obviously keeping an eye on that, and then you'll, like, you're already-
I mean, we, we keep an eye on that every day for all those projects. I mean, one of the things for the Tavoli project specifically was the additional federal resources that came in that have another layer of complexity to them in terms of approvals. So we're working through those approvals, which then will allow us to be able to spend all of the money, because we can't kind of spend anything until we get that approval, because it applies to all the funding sources. But we're actively evaluating. We continue to work with all the projects, whether or not they're large redevelopment projects or our smaller, our smaller rehabilitation projects of vacant properties with developers in terms of their costs and needs to be able to get the work done.
And I have one more question. Okay. The, I, I, can you tell me if Bloomberg is doing any work in, any, any studies or anything related to anything that DHCD is working on?
So the mayor's office has a number of different components in terms of different people that they're talking to and, and looking at for work that's happening across the city, and different pieces there.
Is there something specific that they're working on? Is it one, one particular project or a couple of things?
I think that there's a number of different things, but I would defer to-
Well, I asked for the list, but I was curious specifically about-
I would defer to the CAO's office on that.
Okay. I'll wait for, I guess, for that list for them to let me know, because I did ask for that. I did ask for that list. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're in recess till 5:00 PM sharp. Before we jump into recess, Commissioner, I want to thank you, your team, Ms. Yates, Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Hessler, or Eric, Jason, Kate, Nicole, Kimberly, the entire team, Seth, David, Tamara. I know I'm forgetting many people, but you have an incredible team. And thanks for all the great work, Scott, that you all do every single day, especially Deputy Commissioner Hammer. So I really appreciate it. A little throwback from last year. So we're in recess till 5:00 PM. Then we have Annie Millie and Live Baltimore. I think, Commissioner, you're going to stick around for that, and whoever's appropriate from your team for that, I'll defer to you. Thank you.